Oh, the volume's up on this TV, I think.
Somebody must have been watching it because I had to adjust.
Well, we were at TRT the other day. One was working and one wasn't.
That wasn't, but I had taken an input. That was good.
That one.
We had, which one should be turned out?
I think that early one. We had this one on, so that invention can take. Okay. Maybe I'll just say, oh, yeah. But he tested like this. He's nineteen months. He tested five months for something and ten months for the others. So he's real low, but that took hours. They just left. I got in the car and left. I mean, it was like, like, oh. He's so not cute though. Like that kid. Respect. Well, my thorn is an element to delay my ransom. So we've set up a trust for him. Cause he'll need someone to take care of. He'll need money to live. And so we're thinking about starting to go. They're going to keep houses instead of selling it. And we'll move them both to Maryland. There's some will take care of them.
And Mike said, you know.
Yeah, because they were the ones hoping their. We're thinking about once Stacy moved out. Cause I don't, I don't like. Well, she's awesome. I'll record her. Right. And I don't, I don't know. I'm supposed to Airbnb, but I don't want to. And I want to find out what I should do. I just don't want to. I have stuff on it. Cause we haven't, I think now. Cause they're just, I mean, I was old Judy's were the ones that were gonna be with anyone or what's. Wouldn't find out in my time by message.
You know.
Right, okay. Yeah.
For.
And it's. Everything. So I don't know why they need us.
Yeah. Find someone else.
Right. Yeah. Because Mike said, no, you weren't. It was to. No, your minutes. No, you don't need your minutes because they were the ones running it. So it's their minutes. It's mine. Right. So it's the official minutes. So, yeah, I was gonna ask Mike about that tonight. I did get the email from her, but I didn't. No, I'm like, oh.
I haven't heard back from NHMA yet, but I did some. What I imagine is just changing your system, fix the ballot and notify.
Good. Good evening. Can you for me?
Yes, right.
Who's the third?
One of the gentlemen who've moved into town.
Thank you.
You can hear you, right?
Right. Dave Rogers, yeah.
Here us.
I don't guess. Man, Sharon.
Oh.
Who?
Oh. She came in yesterday. We already knew that. This is.
Pretty good and really good options. I know she's going, she wants to be really, really good. She wants to be on the. Area. So she's already written that letter. They're all positive.
I mean. Really good options. And, yeah. Yes. Yes.
We already know the procedures.
Yeah. Yes.
You know.
Absolutely.
That's my thought either.
Cause you know, there's no rule that's if you can't have a world, some of the ways.
Right. As you know, as many as you can get. Yeah. And you can meet it.
Well, I'm like, yeah, so I'm asking there are big people there and Joe came in voice on the vision, but there's only three. They could have appointed two.
I sure mean it is. And now in. And we see an ultimate, but ultimate stage. Yeah.
That's what I've been doing as.
If they are so interested.
Jack, how you doing?
Well, thank you.
Most games Saturday?
Yeah. From West Side. One.
When this challenge.
We. Their storm was still. Thor's keys. I had to respond. So I want to say my thorns is the meds on Fridays.
Oh, yeah. That's why we got them.
I think it might get him a little more involved.
Yeah, Saturday, we decided to shut down the transfer station. Negative. We'll like, I'll be recording the phone.
No, they're not.
They're gonna stay up in the.
I got a nice. About that. But I don't want to give this slogan as well as like.
We can get over it.
Oh, you're.
Very.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting's order. Okay, so.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Recording. Are you recording?
We're recording. Okay. We're here tonight to have a public hearing on the two proposed bond articles for the upcoming town meeting. So we're gonna start with the first one. I'm gonna read the article as, as it will appear on the warrant. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $2,200,000 for the engineering and reconstruction of a portion of the Route Three water main. And to authorize the issuance of not more than $2,200,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act. And to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon. And then hopefully it'll say the selectmen and the budget committee recommend this article. Um, we got a, we had Wes Samson, who has done a lot of the water engineering in this town. Um, met with Nate and walked Route Three, the length of the proposed, um, we water main replacement. Which starts at the, um, uh, Boys Brook Pump Station, which is just below Indian Head. It's that brick building that's set back. From the road. It runs sort of diagonally out from that building towards Route Three and then runs up along the east side of Route Three. Um, it, it crosses under the bridge that goes over Route Three. That's the exit ramp. And then it crosses, uh, the exit ramp itself and goes into the woods. Between the exit ramp and the first driveway into the flow. In underground in that area is a hundred and sixty thousand gallon underground tank. At such an elevation that provides good pressure to, to the downhill side. What's running up there right now is an eight inch water line. What's proposed is to replace it with a twelve inch water line. Um, the replacement line, uh, we anticipate to, to be, um. Not in the same location as the old water line, but between the old water line and the edge of Route Three. So it's still within our right of way. It's just moving it over a little bit. And that's in general, down right below, uh, right below Indian Head at Boys Brook. There was, there's other configurations, but basically it's gonna run along. Loop three, the same as, as the one that's there now, just closer to the road. Um, we had two price, uh, actually three price, uh, estimates. One was using ductile iron pipe. Which had a total project cost of two point five five seven million. And the other two were using HDP E pipe and PVC O pipe. And both of those come in at the two point one, two point two million dollars range. Um, in discussion with, with Nate, the other pipe alternatives are, um, less expensive and, and, um. Of equal enough quality, uh, that, 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 that would be the preferred method. So we are looking to, to borrow the money to fund that and have that be a project. Um, that starting next year, at least the engineering and permitting of it. Again, we, we can't just go ahead and do it. We have, we'll work with the state, the DOT. Um, crossing the exit ramp is gonna be tricky and it depends on. If, if we're ready to go, when they're ready to repave that exit ramp, they will allow us to cut a trench across the. Ramp and bury the pipe. If, if the timing doesn't line up, we'll have to, uh, bore underneath the existing. Exit ramp and sleeve a pipe through that, that bored out hole. Um, so our hope is that obviously the, the cutting and trenching is, is. Easier and less expensive to do. Hopefully we'll be able to get that timing right to do that. So with that, I'll open up, um, public comments on the, uh, bond article. Paul?
Yeah, it was a, um. My comment probably mostly about this, but is there any reason why you wouldn't consider using the undependent fund balance? Um, to reduce. This bond. And. Conversely, on the, the fire truck pumper, um, by a. Used one instead of a new one. That would put, that would put this bond down to about a one point nine. Um, it would mature faster. Um, I've had discussions with fire chief and said that he was all for getting a, uh, a used fire truck. And. Consider that.
Uh, bottom line, yes, I will. Um, I can't speak to the whole board. I'm speaking for myself. The, uh, the fire truck is on this, on the warrant for, is it four fifty?
Four fifty, right. Yeah. But yeah, the fire trucks off four fifty. I think Karina said at our last budget meeting that what was gonna happen. For fifty, you're gonna use the undependent fund balance, the two and the. What was it?
Four fifty.
What's that?
Four fifty.
Four fifty, which would be nine. And.
No, 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 no.
Oh.
Would be four fifty.
How much the undependent fund balance?
Four fifty.
You're gonna use four fifty on the undependent fund balance and not. And not do the fire truck out of, out of, as a bond, that's what you're saying?
So what we're proposing right now is to. Have four hundred and fifty for, for the fire truck. Take four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the undissimulated fund balance.
Okay.
Put it into the fire, uh, equipment capital reserve. With the three hundred and change that's already in there or will be in there after town meeting, hopefully. Plus the four fifty that we'll put in there. Well, that'll give us the seven fifty, seven sixty that we need to purchase the vehicle in cash.
And, and, and talking, so that'd be some, uh. Samples of these fire trucks that were two years old, three years old, uh, that will qualify still for them, put them down within that fifteen year range. Uh, and, and then we're really like between three and four hundred thousand dollars. Money. Still get a pretty decent vehicle.
My question is, why is Ron bringing this to Paul Bowden and not to myself or the board? Because I haven't seen a quote for a used fire truck. I haven't seen anything in regards to a used fire truck. And I know Al and yourself made a point of this on Tuesday night over and over again. I don't understand why. You both are bringing this to the table versus the fire chief bringing this to the table and to the.
And I understand it was something that was considered prior to the decision to buy this.
Right. I think they investigated all options when they were looking at what to purchase.
You know, I was hoping that Ron was gonna be here.
Okay, hold on.
Ron told me he talked to you, OJ, as well, and he did tell me he talked to you too, Karina. So.
Hold on, Jack.
You know, I have not heard anything about a used vehicle as a selectman or as a taxpayer in town. My question, I guess, would be, why the hell would a fire department want to get rid of a two-year-old truck? I mean, I just don't understand why someone would spend that much money to buy a new one, then two years later. Get rid of it and lose a substantial amount of the value. Um, obviously, you know, I assume based on what you're saying, if it's factual, and I have no reason to doubt.
You have to check.
No, I have no reasons to doubt it. Um, that, you know, he's done some work, but again, like Karina said, he has not brought it to the board. But that would be one of the questions that I would have, that, you know, where is it coming from? Is it coming from in-state, out-of-state? Um, you know, all of that. If it can save the taxpayers' money, that'd be far. But again, this is at the twelfth hour, you know, so.
Right.
I don't know it.
Well, okay, wait, wait. We're here to discuss the.
No, 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 that's why we kind of.
So, so, so this, this, this is, this is my answer. Would I consider, would I personally consider using it and discuss this with the other selectmen? Using the fund balance to offset some, some of this? Um, sure. I mean, we all know how the fund balance works. We can, we can take that money and, and at the town meeting, have them on.
But I got them.
A certain purchase, whether it be a fire truck or in the fire capital reserve or a water line or whatever. But we can only do it once for each, you know, for the total amount. Or if, if the town doesn't direct us to do anything, we as a board aren't gonna just. I mean, I think I can speak with the book. We're not gonna just take the whole amount and just leave it in, in unexpended fund balance. We're gonna use it. If we're not directed to point it at any specific thing, we'll use it to offset the general tax rate and, and. Given the same amount of money, we're gonna take, let's say it's five hundred thousand dollars of unexpended fund balance. If we put it toward the specific project or if we just use it to offset the tax rate, it's a wash unless we do it to offset a bond, which then it would last.
Right.
That effectively lasts over years, but it's still saving.
Right.
That. So, so with that being said, I'd like to look at the, um, the, the bond issue. And when the, when the budget committee has the, their hearing on raising money for the fire truck. Let's, let's discuss how we fund the fire truck as part of that, because this, that's not this discussion.
I would precisely if, if that could happen, because the, the fire department does currently have, and had bought used vehicles like the, the lighter truck and the other. Uh, emergency truck that they have, you know, so if, if that could happen and you could use that unexpendable fund balance for offset some of that. That, uh, water bond up there, that certainly would help a lot, I would think.
Now.
Um, just to answer Mr. Daly's question about why would a, a town buy a used fire truck? Um, some towns will order a truck and then either a new chief comes in or, or. Financial. Right. And ordering trucker here or if you look on some of the used websites, you'll see barely new in two thousand twenty-two and. Two thousand twenty-three trucks up for sale, yeah, brand new truck. And a lot of times you'll see demo truck. These companies will make trucks. They'll demo the truck for six months to a year and show other departments and then they'll sell the truck. So, um, there is a significant savings. Some of these trucks are probably half the cost of the original fire truck itself. And I know when we bought or when Chief Beer bought the tower truck here, he got a great deal on that truck and that's where they had a great. Truck and make it save. I had one problem with the airbags. That's funny, except for that. That was a hell of a deal. No, my question wasn't why would we buy a used one? My question was why somebody would get rid of a, by a department would get rid of a two-year-old truck?
All right, is any other water line? Is there any on the water line? All right, they're being none. I'll close the public hearing on that. Um, is there any comments, uh, suggestions from the board?
Now, it's needed.
Okay, oh, then, then I will make a motion that we bring this to the, to the town meeting as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
I just have a question.
Yes.
But if the budget committee, once they hold their, um, hearing and talk about funding, that may change your decision. As to what the warrant article reads.
If, if, if they want to use specifically use unexp- unexpended fund balance. To look towards this, um, we could incorporate the lang- that language into this now.
Would you then re-vote on it?
We, we would re-vote on it. Would we have to have a new public hearing? It, it does, it, it changes the warrant article. But not, not it just the funding of it. I, I don't know if that requires it.
I don't, yeah, I mean, it doesn't change the intent. I think it just changed the funding strategy. So I think, um. Technically, you'd probably be okay. I mean, that's what the hearing's for, is to discuss and get, you know. Comments and kind of work through things. So I think it's okay to change it after the fact. Um, but while still in the, you know, um.
Yeah.
Setting.
I think, I think it's a substantial change. We have to have a new hearing.
Right.
So. Um, again, I'd be for that if, if we want, you know, if we have. Fund balance. Um, you know, again, I, I don't think it's our intent to, to not use it to offset taxes.
No.
So, it's fine with me. All right, um, then let's move on to the second one. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of eight million, five hundred thousand dollars for the engineering and construction of a new police facility. And to authorize the issuance of not more than eight million, five hundred thousand dollars of bonds and notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act. And to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon. Um, and again, it'll say the selectmen and budget committee do or do not recommend this article.
Will you open this up? I just want to, um. Tell you, I think everybody here, except for maybe Miles, was at the budget meeting two days ago and chief. Um, the budget committee voted to not recommend this article. Um, and I think the biggest thing was price. Um, there, there's, um. They believe that it's too much money for what we're proposing. Fifteen thousand square foot building at six hundred dollars a square foot. They thought was too much, um, too higher price. Um, and I know Dennis, and not to cut you off, but compared it to like his building, which was three hundred something a square foot. Um, which. After, when I got home, I'm thinking about that and I can understand, I mean, that's three hundred something a square foot, but in a police department, you're building it, um. The infrastructure so that the, in the Sallyport, so you can't drive through the walls and the bulletproof walls and bulletproof windows and safety and all that stuff. And the infrastructure itself with the technology and the wires and the cables and the, all that, and, and it's outfitting it. It's not a shell. It, it's an outfitted building with all the technology it needs and the, the functioning jail cells with the locking doors and the cameras and the. But you know, sink toilet combinations and all that stuff. Um, you know, all of the police, it's outfitted. So maybe the shell is three hundred dollars a square foot and the rest of it's three hundred dollars a square foot. Um, this is an outfitted police department, not just a building. Um, so that might clarify something there. Um, and they, the, the, the number was. Um, for around, you know, if this was six or below or whatever, then that might be a different conversation and, um. So it was not, I mean, I think everybody understood and agreed that there is a need, um, for a new fire station. They just thought that this, I'm sorry, police station. So we're on the fire truck thing. Sorry. Thank you for that. A new, there's a, there is a definite need for a new police station. Um, however, they thought that the, um, eight point five million was just too high a price for them. So I just wanted you to know where the, the budget committee stood here tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. I will open some for, for public comment, Brent.
So, uh, to your point. Um, did anybody do research on what the market rate for a police facility per square feet is? Cause I suspect. None of us are actual experts. Probably Dennis is the person who are expert on instruction class. Of a large scale buildings. So did somebody do some research?
Answer, yes, the architectural firm that we hired. Contracted, it were contracted with, did that research. Absolutely.
Yeah, they, they used a third-party firm. Um. The, the name's gonna.
Yeah, I can't think.
The name's gonna, I'm gonna not miss, but they, they, it's a firm that's a contract estimator out of the Manchester area that does municipal projects. And he was the one that actually put the estimate together.
So a specialist in municipal.
Yes.
Person that I would look to for that kind of information, but.
And that's.
I think everybody.
Yes.
If I, if I may, was I, is anybody, if anybody's speaking now is speaking as a.
Yes.
And not as biased.
Correct. That is correct. This is a public hearing, so you're all just individuals, not a official committee. Go ahead, Al.
Um, I read, I'm pretty familiar with the problem. The chief definitely, I have to agree a hundred percent. You do need a new facility. Um, where I worked is fire chief, counter-biased, ran the same problem. They pose a safety complex. The voters voted down, uh, the, the house of police were actually occupied and they had to be out of it. They had to come up with a solution. And actually, the, um, the building inspector for the town came up with a solution. He built a police station. That can accommodate twelve officers. Now, I know we have sixteen, including.
Yeah, between full-time and part-time.
Yeah, right. And I actually have the plans. He gave me the plans and he says they can be, you know, kind of changed around. But he says you could build a halfway decent facility for less than one point five million. It's just how you build it. You wanna build it to the commercial grade with, you know, or you could build it the way he built it. He does have Sally Port in here. I'll leave the plans with the. Automatic or select board. He does have, uh, holding cells and juvenile cell and detention cell. He has an armory. Uh, male, female locker rooms, conference room, lieutenant's side, chief's room, um, a lobby and everything. And, uh, he says, you know, you can expand on it, but if anybody's interested in looking at it, you should, uh, you know, I hate to see. This whole thing get knocked down and then the police don't get something. They need something and they need it soon. I mean, we're talking within a year or two, if not soon. So they're right here. If anybody wants to look at them.
Are those just plans or was that, is it been built? Does it exist?
It's been built and everything.
And was it built?
Uh, three and a half, four years ago.
Four years ago, one point five. So that building now is gonna be fine.
No, it wasn't. It was built four years ago at four hundred thousand dollars.
I, I just find that unrealistic in today's construction prices. And I, and again, we want with the commercial grade. I mean, we don't want to get into a position where we build a building that does not last us.
Right.
It, that's something too, is that we, the, the specifications we gave them is we want it to be a viable building fifty years from now, not just today.
No, I, I, I think there's many options.
Trying to help out here.
Yeah.
Taxpayer.
Yep, but Brian.
Uh, just like the here experience that I had three years ago in a different town. Uh, on a building project and on the building project similar to this one. The town, uh, folks agreed that the need was there. So, you know, in terms of the police, I don't think there's a difference of opinion that a need does not exist. Um, however, at the town meeting, the two legislative bodies, the, the selectmen and budget committee were on different pages. As a result, uh, the town, uh, chose not to fund the project and then it had to start all over again. You know, price, I think, is subjective, um, in terms of if it's eight million, if it's five million, if it's six million. I don't know the answer to that, but. Uh, I think for the person in the audience voting, a bigger number is harder to swallow than a, a lesser number. So I would just suggest, think about, um, if. The vote that occurred on Tuesday night remains the same, um, then there's a. Higher probability the project would not get funded this year. Um, and with that in mind, uh, maybe a warrant article should not be placed on the ballot this year. To confuse the voters, um, and having them make a decision this year and then asking them to make another decision next year. Versus setting up a scenario where the decision, um, could have a higher probability of success. What happened in the town it came from is that it failed one year and the next year it passed by eighty-five percent. Because the groups got together, the leaders in the town got together and as a result, the package was a success. But just, just a thought.
Thank you. Dennis?
Have a question and thank you, Tammy, for clarifying that. I did say that I don't, we have buildings, but I don't specialize in.
Absolutely. Yeah.
That is a different type of building altogether. Um, I have a question. If, so they went to the architects, they put it on paper, they went out to a cost estimator, which is what I do as well. And I also stated that I had to go back after I went to that. So it goes to the cost estimator. Cost estimator is doing exactly that. He's cost estimating. So after the, after we appropriate some funds for it. And you send it out to bid, which we need to do, whether it's three, four, or five bids, and we see that the bids come in. At less than eight and a half million dollars. Here's my question. What is? Here's my question. What is the process at that point? Let's say it comes in at six and a half or seven million dollars. Do we have to read both this with the talent to say it's gonna cost less money?
No.
You can read.
As I, it's, it, we have, the, the warrant article is written, gives the board, um, of. Authorization to borrow and spend eight point five million. We don't have to. Okay, this could pass and we could all say, hey, we're not gonna build this, period. Or we could say we can build it for, for six million. And we only borrow six million and we only spend six million. What we cannot do is go over the eight point five without coming back to the town and raising funds somewhere else.
So thanks for clarification there. So. It's, that's the reason we've all agreed that we want a need and want a new police station. So. If it can be told that that's the cap and then we send it out to bid. You, you're only at a cost estimator right now, but you're my big, it is okay and it does, you know, I've, I've sent it out to bid and it's coming. At ten or twenty percent less than what that cost estimator said, because the cost estimator is not gonna count every two by four, so to speak. It's in the building. Um, they just do a rough estimate right at the top and then it goes from there. Now you can get bids that are over the cost estimator, but you throw those people out of the room and tell them somebody else. So, eh, yeah, and it has to be told that, that we're not gonna spend more than eight and a half million. But it's not to be said that we're gonna spend eight and a half million dollars, which I think it may come in last. With all due respect for a police station. As I stated, I've never been inside a police station, nor do I want to.
Not that he's admitting to.
We can fix that if you want.
Jim? I just think that Elsa's proposal deserves consideration. Shouldn't we just dismiss it out of hand? That's all I'll say.
Yeah.
Well. Yeah, I think an eight and a half million dollar police station is a big, big heavy lift for taxpayers in this town. Um. Uh, just the residential taxpayers, but the commercial business people as well and how it will impact their, their taxes. Um. I agree with what's been said tonight. I think that. The board would be better off to not have this go for the. Public this year. And to set that and. If, if you just simply take the amount of people that had questions and voted off from the budget committee, know that the general public and law, by law, it's gonna be roughly about the same. You know, the sufferer defeat. Is, is, is a bad place to start. Yeah, I think you're better off to take a look at it and say, you know, maybe eight and a half things to like, can we? Can we look at this one or can we downsize, take a look at them or maybe make another phase out of it and just do. Maybe the whole project yet at the end is as big as it is, but instead of having a phase for the police department and a phase for the fire department. Maybe you can kind of have four phases or three phases. So, you know, might cut out some of it, cut out more of it. In the initial phase and, and lower the cost and kind of look at it that way. That would be my suggestion.
Right?
So I realize it's the authentication of the world, but Google says you can build a police station for two hundred sixty-five dollars. So, uh. That, now, Google is not always right. But that's a big difference between.
Six hundred.
Two hundred sixty-five and six hundred. Are usually not off by.
My half signs.
So, uh. I, I just, and, and one other comment is when you take things to the voters. Um, and they feel that the price is inflated. They lose, uh, confidence in. The judgment of the people presenting that to them to, uh, responsibly manage their money, just to follow you. So. You, you do, I think, to, um. Dennis, Paul and everybody. Uh, I should, but, but you may want to reconsider before you bring that to the first one. Cause we, we all agree you gotta get this police station built. We just don't agree that. You're presenting the right advice to.
All right, any other?
Yeah, no, or do the price may not, if you waited a year, so the price. Who knows where inflation really is gonna end up here and some of those costs are coming down a little bit now, just very little. But, you know, it may, that may change a lot on, on the price estimation too, you know, so. I think all, all, it, it just seems like, like, really.
And just so everyone knows too, that price estimate was a twenty twenty-four. Cost, price estimate on a twenty twenty-three, so I think they added like a twelve to fifteen percent on top of what current rates are going. So, I mean, that is a true statement that, um, you know, we're, they are, it's just an estimate and that they are projecting out. Twenty-four months from now essentially, or twelve to eighteen, whatever it is, and, um. There are a lot of variations that can happen between now and then.
And I think a lot of, you know. If, if people, taxpayers see an eight and a half million dollar bond. They don't, I don't think that they have the. This like one idea. I don't think they have the trust that if it was like, say, seven point five. That, that all of a sudden, there's other little things might creep in that you need, that you have the ability to get it up to eight and a half. So I think you really wanna hone that number in and, and, and that's what you wanna go for. I just think that. You know, you, that number wants to be specific and real.
I just wanna, I, I am against waiting a year. Simply because of the dire need at the police department. The way, in the way that municipal budgeting works, we wait a year. So now it's on the twenty twenty-four ballot. So now we get it designed and maybe out to bid for twenty twenty-five and then they can start construction twenty twenty-six. And then they're moving into it twenty twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Uh, it's, it, we don't have that kind of time for the police department. In the, in the meantime, they're literally bursting at the seams and. Not complying with a lot of laws that need to be complied with to house a police station. I'm not even joking. Um, it, it's. I won't get into specifics. I'm sure you all know most of them. Um, I don't think we have time to wait. We just don't. We need to get this done. We need to get it done. Sooner rather than later. I think we need to, um, work very hard on, um, the costs. Now, I, I, Google's fine. It's kind of like Facebook. We believe it was hit on Facebook. But we hired professionals that do this. This is their job. This is what they do. They are professionals in. Building this cost estimator. And you're right, it just is an estimate. Um, and. If it comes in lower than that, we won't spend the eight and a half million. And we don't, we're looking for extras just to spend it. That is not how this town has worked traditionally. We're not gonna start doing that now. Um. We all look to save money for the taxpayers all the time. Um. So. I don't, I don't think we should wait. I think we need to move forward with the cost estimates that we have from the professionals. Um, unless we decide to build a smaller building and lower the price. Um, which I don't advise that, but I don't think we should wait. I, I don't think they need to wait five or six years. I don't think they can wait five or six years for a new police station. And get another.
Yep, hold on, Jack.
Um, definitely, I agree that we need it. Let's ask the man who lives it, what he feels he needs and how immediate the need is. Chief, the floor is yours.
Well. Feel it is immediate. We are bursting at the seams. I don't have adequate facilities for now, let me know. You know, you address the hallway. It's not really good. It's not good practice. Um. We have offices that used to be in what used to be a workout room. It also doubles as an armory and also doubles as a bathroom. I mean, we have more people, we're gonna continue, I think, in the future to have more people based on the growth of this town. Let's face it. I, I disagree if anybody says the town's not wrong. Um, we're trying our best with a space that we appreciate what we have. There's no question about it. We appreciate your support. Um, tremendously. And we know this is a, this is a pickle thing and, and, and I very agree with Dennis. That number, you know, there's an estimate and then there's the number. I think when the two projects were together in a public safety center. We had ruggedized, you know, pavement for fire trucks. We had a bigger footprint. And then at the last second, when, you know, that twenty-four million dollar number was a sticker shot to me, I'm like, no way, this is gonna happen. So we went back to drawing really fast to get something of a smaller footprint in front of, in front of budget committee, front of selectmen. And I think as far as cost estimation goes, I don't think there was enough time to come up with that. Uh, representative number of a smaller footprint of, without the recognized pavement and everything else. So I think like Dennis says, I think that number could be drastically smaller. I think because of time constraints. This is what we got. We gotta use these numbers. We gotta go. That's what I feel happened. Um, so, is it eight point five? Probably not. But I don't know that number right now because we ran out of time. So, Al.
Chief, is there any possibilities of, uh, the dispatching staying where they are for a while? They have to move with you or can they be independent? That's a huge move.
That is a huge move. I, I mean, yeah, it wouldn't be a centralized. The answer is no, they don't have to, but it wouldn't be a centralized, you know, unit. I mean, dispatches. Typically are, you know, isolated anyway, in most cases. Uh, that is a big, that's towers, that's, um, a lot of equipment and radios and, yeah. Uh, but I, 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 you know, they could, they'd like to be together, but, cause it also doubles as, you know, a host of the front door when people come into the station. There's a lot of things that probably could be done. But there's no question that, and I think everybody here that has that, that we're in a situation of, we can do something and. Um, appreciative of whatever it is we can. That's up to you. I'm not even a resident. Border, uh, but I'm happy to, uh, be here and to, to share that, to share that, we try our best.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief. Good one.
Yeah, just one last comment. It's, it's kind of this. We write guys the name. Wouldn't like to wait a hundred years either. Can you change the amount? Because just simply by the fact of. Uh, if you go take the budget committee as a small focus group, they voted ten to one against. If you take that as representative of the town, there's no way this bill's gonna pass. So unless there's changes made to it, it's gonna be another year. So can, is, is it possible to lower the will not exceed? I try to deal with it.
I also do if he has a suggestion. Because.
But can I, can I?
Absolutely, yes.
I'm gonna pause the public hearing. We can reopen it. I know there's people wanna speak. Um, once I heard that the budget committee unanimously voted against this, um. I, I understand that sentiment, right? Um, I had, had, when we got the original twenty-four million dollars. That it kind of put all my thoughts down on paper as far as what we really need, what we could do, what we could change. Uh, one of the things I investigated was the, the station that, the police station that was built in Tilton in twenty twenty for four point six eight million dollars. They have twelve offices. Um, a chief, uh, two or three part-time offices and three dispatch. A little bit smaller, but reasonably close, four point six eight million. Now, that was in twenty twenty. Or construction between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty opened in twenty twenty. So prices were a little bit lower there, but if we built that same station. Um, at today's prices, you, you're looking six, maybe six and a half. Um. Of which they spent three, uh, sorry, two hundred thousand dollars, um, in, in architectural fees. To, to get to that, um, four point six eight million dollars. Um. I agree, there's no sense bringing this to town meeting at eight point five million dollars. We've got zero budget committee votes. We're gonna get, hmm, not many more at town meeting. All right. So either, either we don't bring this or we, we bring this at a price that, that, I think we all agree, everybody in this room agrees we need a new police station. I'm gonna throw out that we, we, we changed the number from eight point five to six. And, and. My feeling is if we agree on that. You know, first of all, we've recognized the need. Now if we can agree on that number and, and the town meeting approves that. We are gonna have a lot more, I think, negotiating power to go out and say, we have six million dollars. What can you build us? As opposed to, um, you know, trying for the eight point five and, and, and building something like that. I agree with Tammy. I'd hate to see this be put off for another whole year. Uh, we're gonna have to build that. We're gonna have to fund it. Waiting doesn't really help. Um, you know, what are we gonna do in the meantime? Are we gonna? You know, get a mobile home and put it all back for, for offices? Are we gonna let them take over portion of the upstairs and, and kick the public out of, say, this room or some of the offices? Are we gonna rent space for, say, the planning department and town clerk somewhere else outside this building to let them expand up? There's options that we have, but I think in the long run, those are all gonna be more expensive and, and a real hassle. It's a real expense to move, certainly the police station, but even, you know, to move the town clerk or the planning department. To a building over there is gonna be expensive and we're gonna have lease to, to pay. Um. I think if we can come to a, a number and agree on it, I'm throwing out the six million dollars. And not that, not that we've voted on that, and maybe we should vote on that to bring that to the public hearing and reopen the, the public hearing.
I was just looking, the average between two thousand, I just Googled. Yeah, two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-three construction prices are fourteen point nine percent higher. So what was your, what was the?
It was, it was four point six eight, but again, that's the building. That didn't include. Some of the equipment and I know that we have a lot of equipment downstairs, but, but there's gonna be other stuff to buy, whether it's. So, you know, video.
Fifteen percent.
So say, say to, to.
Six eight. Five to five, yeah.
Another forty, another five, five hundred to six hundred thousand, that's all.
So six million dollars would, would be the, the.
I'm comfortable with that. If you take six million dollars and you divide it by a twenty-year bond, that's three hundred thousand dollars a year plus interest, right? So you say maybe three fifty, kind of maybe worst case scenario. That's about a, a, three twenty-five is a twenty-six percent, uh. Increase on the, i- is the tax impact for that. Uh, at three twenty-five, it's twenty-six cents.
Twenty-six cents.
Yeah.
Now, if, if you look at, we're gonna get rid of, we're gonna get rid of three and a half million dollars worth of debt. Okay.
Right.
Before the station is even built. Even if we start today, we'll be done with that debt before this is built.
Right.
So, so at six million, we're only looking at, at really now the two and a half million dollars in, in debt more than we have.
Right.
Uh, one of those is paid, was paid off this year, so. But still, this will be the first year without that.
That's for that one bond that we've got.
And we got two that are done.
Two that are done, yeah.
This year.
This year.
Right, right.
So one was paid off last year, two this year. So it'll be two and a half million more than we currently have with those three.
With those three. And, and just right, which we, we've already talked about the water, so we've got stuff, right?
Right.
Um.
The other thing, but, but maybe, I mean, we've heard from people in the room that have had experiences with new stations. Al brought us something, um, you know, we looked online, Karina did some, you've done some. You know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. I mean, I hate to be paying architects. Fees when they've already done X and they're gonna say, well, we're gonna give you a Y, but really it's a modification of X. They've got half the work done. And we're paying top dollar for that stuff. I mean, they plagiarize themselves in one sense and pass it on to us. The ultimate consumer. I've seen it happen when I was building in, in public housing in, in my community. Um, you know, it's cookie cutter in some cases. Every town is unique. I don't wanna say you can make a cookie cutter and it'll work for everybody. But by the same token, I mean, we can cut down on architectural fees. We can utilize some of the, uh, plans that, you know. With input from the people, the end users, i.e. the chief and his staff. Uh, I, I think we can bring it in at least under six million dollars. So I'd be in favor of supporting that.
All right.
Oh, no, go ahead. We can push to reduce the police department building bond amount to six million.
So.
Allison, David.
Hi. Now I'd love to hear.
Thank you. Public hearing on a revised proposal. Brian?
Um, just like to offer another comment. I think your decision has been very wise. The, the other thing from the public's perception is when there's a big number out there. Uh, most folks can't get their head around it. Um, in, one of the things I saw in previous places I've been in. Where bond issues have been successful is where the board or whatever the group is. They clearly outlined for the public. how this is going to be funded. Karina talked about a twenty-year bond. That's certainly an outline. And there's certainly other bonds available in terms of lengths that could be considered. You OJ had pointed out that there's going to be declining debt service. So that declining debt service actually frees up dollars that could be committed towards this particular bond. Earlier, Paul talked about the undesigned fund balance, which um is money that's out there. Uh, certainly it's used for many, many different purposes. But I think if the board were to put together a a proposal to the public showing multiple funding sources that the public could feel comfortable with, then six million doesn't become like a shock factor. Uh, what becomes the shock factor is the cents per thousand on the tax rate, and that's a losing calculation. And that's that's what scares people. So being, and I'm not trying to say being creative, being uh strategic in laying out a funding mechanism that supports it so that the impact is not significant because it, as Karina knows, it really doesn't hit until the the second year of the bond. Which is just a thought on packaging the funding source.
Great comments. Thank you, Al.
If we could somehow, I think you guys explained it perfectly, both of you. Get right down to a penny. I mean, people like to look at simple math. And I think the way you said it, Karina, and the way you all said it. If we can explain to the the general voters, uh, you know, how many people are going to show up, sixty, seventy, depending on night, we really have to make it simple for them and have it almost like an explanation of what, you know, what the debt's gonna be, what um what bonds we're losing and everything and what impact it's going to have on that dollar. I mean, I think we could sell it to the public that way, or I think it's a simple person that looks at it and says, oh, no way. Right, we played it and and maybe just a one-page pamphlet.
A factual information.
Yeah, and and everybody, or even try selling it even before the meeting. I mean, I'm willing to go around all my neighbors on Paula Road or whatever and just hand it out to them and.
Put it on the town website when the.
We need, we need to sell this product to our customers and the voters are our customers.
We're gonna get a digital blog, signboard, right, Chief? On that.
That's.
Yeah.
I think we had also mentioned the other night uh about, I think maybe Tammy mentioned it, about possible grants. Uh, I mean, we don't have them yet, but that's a possibility to lower that number also.
It it definitely is. I was on a conference call with two hundred and fifty other representatives from municipalities today, and they outlined all the grant opportunities for twenty-three. Um, and I mean, there's definitely going to be grants out there, um, but I think we you know, need someone who um maybe has a little bit more of knowledge base in regards to federal grants to help us with that because there are some.
A million times so far, yeah.
But there are grants out there, absolutely.
I'm still in favor of hiring someone, paying the short money to find out exactly what we could qualify for in grants.
You don't have to do that, Tammy. I I just.
You don't have to.
No, listen, 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 listen to me. For a minute, please. Um, Karina and I had spoken the other day. We've got people that we've elected federally as officials that serve us. I personally have gone to them in some of the consulting work that I do. They've been fantastic in leading me down the right path to deal with such entities as the IRS, which can be a morass of problems for everybody and anybody that's ever dealt with them. And or in my previous life, getting grants and putting the pressure on someone to um actually go and be my rallying point in Congress. Um, you know, and these are state senate, I mean, federal senators and congressional delegation. So um, you know, before we go spending taxpayer money on another position, I'd rather see us try that route. She, like Karina said, she was on this, and I think there was another one last week. Wasn't there another?
Yeah, and I don't think Tammy wants to fund another position. I think she just wants to like maybe contacted the grant writer and say, can you spend an hour and put some grants together for us? I'm like, but I I also agree with Jack that today Annie Custer's office put that webinar on. They put that, so um they're going to send everyone all the documentation that we were in the, you know, for the webinar today. So, you know, I'll get contact info and um, you know, uh, essentially a an itemized list of grants. Not to say that we'll qualify for all of them, but um, they'll show what's out there.
For just a few hundred dollars, we could hire someone to tell us what's out there that we could qualify for, and then we could decide which ones we want to hire a grant writer to write. Or write on our own, whatever. It's just short money to know what's even available, especially for town meeting.
Well, I think I think we're all in favor of of working towards getting some some grant money for this for the for the uh water line, if possible. Uh, for the fire truck, Al sent sent some some information um on fire vehicles and equipment grants are available. So I I mean, I think we need we need to to do that. But but getting back to this, any other pub, Paul?
Having said on three of the building committees, the this town, this building, fire department, library. One of the things that I found is that the taxpayers want to know what they're buying. So just drop it from eight and a half million, six million. You're gonna have to show them something, what it is. And you're gonna have to show them all the other ideas of the funding. So you're gonna have to put together a pretty specific package, I think, to get that two-thirds majority. You fifty percent, come on. That's not hard to get, but to get the two-thirds has done require some some detail. And 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 I don't think it's just gonna be, look, we won't spend up, we'll only spend no more than six. People are gonna look at you and go, nah, like, let's see what we'll get for six. So that's because next thing you know, it's a six million dollar project that turns into twenty-four million because six million is only a a quarter of it and and you know. So so they're gonna want, they're gonna want answers to that. That's the only thing I will tell you is that you you really want to go in your first shot with your best shot if you're gonna do it. You know, I don't think you want to go in and say we won't go over six million. Well, what are you gonna buy? Well, we're gonna see what we can get and we're gonna see what what we can reduce it to. I don't think that's gonna work. I think most of the taxpayers, they'll can say, hell, it's what you're gonna, tell us what we're gonna get for our money, for our six million dollars. And I think that now you really, you want to go with some definite detail in your first first program.
And I I think we can do that.
I mean, it's it's short timeframe. You got a month, a month to do, to do it.
And you don't want to rush it because it's I I'm just, I know they need it. I know that, but you know, you want to go in with your best foot forward and know everything you can know about it. You know, and and I think that I know they need it, but the police have been working down there for many years with the way it is. There's one more year of fact-finding, uh, grant writing, looking for other money sources. That would prove a- and and to be able to do that would would prove beneficial, I think, in in this project. I really do. I think that it it just rushing, and I think it's gonna get a no, and then it's gonna get, you know, especially two-thirds.
Dennis?
I agree with Paul. You're gonna have to, you're. The board's like a very articulate explaining, especially you. You're very good at explaining what we have before us. I think the six million, you gotta have the picture. And I think, but I think that the six, you've done your homework. You have the calcul- calculators out with the estimators and at six million dollars, um, and I didn't, you've made a statement, you made a statement earlier, but the estimators are making it twenty twenty-four pricing. I probably believe that the pricing is stabilizing. It'll never go back to what it was, but it's stabilizing. I know I have thirteen, fourteen subcontractors over there, and I have nobody coming to me to, Dennis, I need a check today because they're gonna buy the product today because the prices are going up next week. So it's stabilizing. They're also saying that that you work or they have work for this year. They don't have a lot of work for next year. So prices are going to stabilize on both of those. And I really believe that this building can be done for six million dollars. So but
Why would be less?
It it has to be told that way. Very much so.
Oh.
Uh, I think um, selectmen and also the committee did a great job last year just selling the forty thousand dollars we needed for conceptual design by that little pamphlet Karina made. I think that was great. I mean, just handing that out on Friday, yeah, having it available. I think that little advertising, people want to read it and see all the numbers and everything and and see it's only twenty seven, twenty-six cents on the dollar. You know? I mean, if they see that and realize, oh, my taxes are only gonna go up maybe nine dollars, twenty dollars or whatever, that's not much. But they see it's gonna go up four or five hundred dollars, they'll realize it. But if they see it black and white, we sell this product, I think we can get it past taxpayers.
Yeah, factoring in the loss of debt.
Right, the loss of debt.
Um, you did a PowerPoint years back. Was it for the levy?
Levy.
That was.
And they made fun of me, you jeans.
How can if you do nothing? It'll probably be just effective and will still make fun of you.
Great.
But no, it worked.
The loss of, the loss of the debt you've already found already has we're still incurring more every year. So you're looking at the two point two million dollar thing. Next year could be something else to jump up. It's you've got to have. So I mean, you know, the loss of debt is is I think you gotta go from where you're at.
Well, I mean, it's only a snapshot in time, but everything's only a snapshot. I mean, town meeting's only a snapshot in time, you know? It's only one year and.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, I've been calculating it in with the what we're paying now and that will be paid off versus how much more will be effective too.
I play the whole picture.
Yeah, it does. When you, when you say we're not just adding this, there's some of it going away.
Exactly. That's what I mean.
Loss it does, it's gonna be lost whether we go to the police station or not. So.
Correct.
I don't know. It it.
Now, that argument is gonna resonate. With the with the board.
Well, you show both. I mean, I don't mean to sweep that under the rug. I mean, this is the cost. However, you take into account these three things being paid off, the net.
But I think what you say is that people who have any question about whether or not it's gonna be built, they might say, well, if we don't build that police station, that debt's coming down. Uh.
Absolutely.
You know, so that's why I'm saying that was to hit your ducks in a row and put your best foot forward the first one. And if it means they have to wait a little longer and they have to change in the hallway again for another year, i- i- it gives you that much better picture and that much better understanding of cost and you see where the uh the market's going with materials and contract. It might might be five minutes, might be four minutes, who knows? And then and then you can really present that that level of deep be hard for people.
Wayne. Um, I was actually sitting here uh less than a month ago, the night that you folks had your meeting and this whole subject was discussed. What I remember was that you men, you all agreed that twenty-four million dollars was way beyond what the town would do. As a guideline. That's where that came from. I don't think it was substantiated at that meeting. We just, we just said it was a uh eight and a half million would be a more acceptable twenty-four million. And now you've lowered the eight and a half million down to six, and is that a guideline again that we should all be working towards in in actually coming up with specific estimates?
Wayne, the eight and a half, I mean, the eight and a half million dollars came as a result of the chief, the architect, and OJ meeting and saying, chief, how can we uh chief, how can this is the cost? So there was a factual number there based on a dollar per square foot and what have. Am I correct, chief?
Yes, but it wasn't an altered number as far as the dollars per square foot because our our footprint changed and other things disappeared. So it was what the number we had under the time question, go in first square.
So there was basically a reduction in the size and scope of the building. And there was an actual, I I believe, a sketch of it, my correct?
Yes.
This Jim.
Did the size change or didn't it it just go into phases?
No.
A reduction in size.
They removed the fire department side of it and only police department.
And then and then the police department and then.
But shrunk the.
And also. Yeah, right. Not, I mean, not by half, you know, but when we went and we identified, we went through the program details and the the chief and, you know, our architects. They, we went room by room, floor by floor. We added a basement because that was something big that the building committee and all, you know, the board had said that why are we not building a basement? You know, cost estimates for, you know, square footage in a basement will be reduced by using the basement for storage and mechanical and and whatnot. So we redesigned the building to include a basement to move and shift some of the square footage around, some of the rooms, the evidence rooms, you know, certain areas. How many bathrooms were required? How many bathrooms did we need? You know, so the building itself changed by not being just a slab and also a reduction in certain rooms and certain square footage. So it was all.
Good.
A successful strategy that the state uses, and you'll see this in February when the governor presents capital budget. The state treasurer will advise the governor how much debt in the subsequent year is disappearing. And then the groups will get together and they'll have all these kinds of proposals. But lo and behold, when May and June comes, it's it's rather interesting that the new debt that gets approved is very close to the debt of being retired. So effectively, what happens is the debt service stays level. Um, for this kind of a project, the numbers are certainly much smaller and different. But that strategy of keeping debt service from growing too rapidly or keeping it level funded and and having multiple funding sources could be your suc- your success in getting the the sixty percent vote going and get this project passed.
I mean, I I listened to it all. Everybody has good points. Um, I think that in the next month, we could get e- enough of a um plan put together to present this at at town meeting. I do, um. I think putting it off for another year doesn't really benefit the town. I mean, we're still gonna spend the money, it's still gonna have to be done. Um, it it just delays the inevitable. I I don't see a huge benefit to waiting a year, you know? I agree with Dennis that the 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 uh, projection for building is is leveling. It's not gonna get down, but it's leveling. Um, and that there's there's no, I just don't see real benefit in waiting. Now, if the town votes it down, we're gonna have to, but but I don't think the fear of that um should make us wait. And I would hope that this committee has has vocalized that they're all in favor of doing this. It was just the dollar amount. Um, you know, could we build something for a million and a half? I honestly don't know, and I honestly don't know if that's what we want. But I've seen what was built in Tilton. Um, I know what the the price was. We had the fifteen percent and and we could build the same thing. And I I just know that if we do it with with a with a basement and put put some of the stuff down in there, um, you know, it might not be the fifty-year plan projected growth of this town, but you know, in in twenty, twenty-five years, if the town gets big enough that they need an an expansion, this bond will be paid off. Let that generation um funds, fund, fund what they need to expand the building. Yep.
You know, one thing too, I mean, it shows the lack of interest in this subject by the audience. You people who are all elected officials as far as the budget committee. So even though what Paul said, it it may be premature, but at least we're bringing the issue to the populace. And so then that starts discussion amongst them, amongst them between, oh, they grab you down at Price Chopper, they grab you at the local bar or what have you. Not you else. I'm not pointing you out. But you know, I mean, at least there's dialogue. Uh, dialogue has been opened up. But right now, people heard initially, some people heard twenty-four million dollars. Oh, Christ, that's crazy. But now that, you know, the town is working together um with the powers that be, i.e. the police, the budget committee, to get the word out there and show, you know, what impact it will have on everybody. We're all taxpayers here, so we're all in the same boat. I mean, I don't want to pay any more taxes. We're all taxpayers here, so we're all in the same boat. I mean, I don't wanna pay any more taxes, but when we get to something that's needed. Remember down the road, we've got some serious other issues that are going to have to be addressed. And you know, it never hurts to put it out and let people discuss it. And somebody's got a better idea, somebody may say, hey, what about this? What about that? And you don't know what's people, um, some of the people in the community might have some ideas that we didn't even think of. Or have been involved in building committees of work for architectural firms or what have you. So, you know, I think even though it could get defeated, I think the fact that we're putting it out in the forefront, we're not doing it behind closed doors, we're saying, hey, folks. We need this now or in the future, but here it is.
So Belmont built a police station two years ago, I, I, is that when you were talking about? Yeah, so Belmont got one. Two years ago, for three and a half million, so if you added that on, you'd be at four million, fifteen percent. So, you know, a, a, and they're, they're. As bigger, if not bigger. So to go from. What would you think about going to formally?
We're here too.
Look, I'm just saying, that, that, that's the factual number was a three and a half, you had fifteen percent.
Dispatch?
Um, yes, but they, it's only part-time dispatch. It's another thing for you to look into, here, so you can look into that.
To back up Paul's point. And maybe some effort should put in advance of. Of trying to survey. Or we'll have a better chance of passing this. I don't know if six will pass the town, but we cer- certainly we'd like to put whatever you put out there. That has a high probability of success. I actually don't know what that number is. But. I thought we should ask the people, maybe should have asked. What they're willing to pay for.
What, what happens though if we go with four, right? It's, it's a, it's a price tag that the community can wrap their head around and that they can approve. And then we design it, we go out to bid and it comes in at five point five, it comes in at six.
Okay, I'll build you.
At, at that point, then we have to go back to town meeting and then we have to wait to the following town meeting and go through this rigmarole. All over again to prove we need more money. How does that look and how does that bear on the community? Wouldn't you rather say we came in under budget and we're returning the funds back to the town or we're not taking out a bond? In the amount that we've been approved to, or would you rather have to go back and say? We miscalculated and we need more money.
When if we were running a business?
Yeah.
I agree with you one hundred percent, you mean that way. Are we, a business is gonna have to ask sixty-six percent of the population to approve it. So my discussion is entirely. What?
Will they approve?
What is the level that you? To have a high probability of success.
If, if I could add, I'll bring Dennis up, he pat me on the back, and I'll pat him in that ear. At the last budget committee meeting, Dennis brought a very good idea that said, what he did when he built his building was. It came in at such an exorbitant rate, he said, look, it's, it's engineered now. He brought them all back in and said, this is where I want this to be, what can you do? So that's what you would do is to say, okay, we've got four million, okay? Back in and say, this is what we have. Design, tell me what we can do with this. And that way there, it doesn't come in at the six million or the seven million. You know, and, and then. You always, again, you can always add on another year, and so if you make this a. Make the building expandable, for lack of a better word, phased, you know? You can then say, okay, so we get the four million, we've got it started, let's keep all rolling after that. But then the public generally will look at, they'll take a look at and think, you know what, they. It is working, we can do this, you know, this, this is a little artificial, you know?
Yeah, I tend to disagree with you. I think if we ask for four million and in two years from now, we ask for another two or we ask, they're gonna laugh at us, they're gonna say, I just gave you four million dollars. And what did you do with it? Why weren't you better prepared for what you needed and presented what you needed versus what you thought was going to happen?
Hopefully you're not gonna come back the next year.
Well, even if it's five years, even if it's five years, I mean, they're gonna say, we just built a bit. Five years old, you act like this. I don't know what the number is either. I don't know if it's four and a half, I don't know if it's, you know, but I'm just saying, I would hate to see us. Go and ask for money and work hard, do these presentations and get the community input. And then have it not be enough money, and then we have to say, well, we can't do anything now, so we gotta go back to town meeting next year because it can only happen once a year.
But what happens? I think the target is figure out. What you can think you can give the people to approve. And then uh go from there, go from there.
I think the four number is probably closer than the six personally, but.
Well, I'm, I'm sure the four number has a better chance of being approved than the six, obviously.
You could always begin, and then somebody had this earlier, approach it as not to exceed, you know, our goal is to keep it, but not to exceed.
Right.
And, and then, then you're giving them your commitment to be frugal and you'll do the best you can. But you're not going back to the well every, you know, I'm on our condo board. If we have to keep going back to them for special assessments, we look, totally lose credibility, you know, that we know how to manage place. And um, you know, you just can't do that.
And, and again, just the way that this works, it will, it, it is, all of these are not to exceed numbers. Even, even the one we just talked about, the, the um, water line. We can go up to two point two million without coming back. If it only costs us one point nine. We're good.
Right.
So, what is that number?
Perhaps your voters are suspicious. And they think that if they give you six. I don't know if it's six either. I know that somebody should figure out a number that the public will pass. And, and the, with the ability to articulate. Uh, the benefits that the public is going to. And, and through their, so that's, I mean, that's my. Is, is, is an unreasonable number, um, that's certainly a slight thing. If that's the number you, you think we could get the public to pass, then yeah, six is okay, but. Again. As that number goes down. Your probability of getting that past the voters goes up.
Dennis, so, so, let me just throw this up there. If we present this, and again, Brian, you had a real good point about how you presented and, and you know. Show the total, how it gets funded, the cents per dollar, the cents per thousand, et cetera. What if we presented this as we're, we're retiring three and a half million dollars of debt? We'll take five hundred thousand dollars of the fund balance and put this at it. There's, there's four million dollars and we're asking to raise eight five. So there's a million dollars. Uh, on the tax rate, but spread over ten, ten years, twenty years, whatever we wanna do.
Can you say that again? I, I couldn't, I couldn't follow that, yeah, say it again.
We're retiring three and a half million dollars of debt between what we paid off last year and what we will pay off this year before the. Police station is built.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that money, that debt service we've been paying every year, we'll continue to do it, that won't have any effect. We'll take five hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance of twenty-two. And put it into the warrant article to be put towards this project. Explicitly.
Okay.
Okay? So that between the entire debt and the fund balance, we've sort of put. Covered four million dollars of the bond.
Okay.
Okay, um. And if we said we wanna add. A million dollars to that. We'll have five million dollars.
And, and that then gives you the. Winning argument that the tax rate would be affected by ten cents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if we divide that by ten years.
Or twenty or whatever.
Right.
And that's great as long as nobody has a fire after twenty twenty-five because they don't even think the pumper's gonna last that long already. And if we don't use that fund balance to buy that fire truck now, we're not getting one until twenty-six or twenty-seven.
That's on.
That's not true, we can, we can still buy the fire truck. Where it's on the warrant out of.
You mean in addition to, in addition to the money we're proposing to take? So you're saying take a million from the fund balance?
I'm saying the funds. Project to not, not.
Not the fire truck, so that we don't buy the fire truck.
No, we buy it. It's, it's.
It's not on here, we're not having a bond hearing for the fire truck.
We're not bonding it, we're, we're.
Without the money out of the fund balance.
Without the money on the fund balance, we won't have enough money to buy a fire truck, not even close.
You can't do that.
I guess.
Not a new fire truck, there you go.
Not going to the fire truck issue, Mike.
You can probably risk going for a million and a half and sell that. And let the fire truck go with the unexpended balance and, and ask for a million, you're asking for a million and a half, that's, that's kind of. That might be pretty easy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ask for a million and a half.
I don't think we can not use that.
Okay, okay.
Is, you're talking with the four, the hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand was going towards the fire truck. You don't expend the fund balance, right, right?
Round numbers, yeah.
And what OJ was proposing there was not using it for that, using it for the police building. Right, so I'm saying, I just suggested leave it with the fire truck. And now your, your net owe debt debt is going to. You're asking the town, you're asking.
Debt that's gonna go away, we're gonna add a million and a half of debt to have five million and that'll be a police station.
But you still have to ask for the five million, you can't.
That's, we, we're still in discussion, Jim.
But you're adding, you're adding two million. Water bond, so that's, that's new debt too.
Oh, it is. We're not trying to hide that, it's, it's new debt.
Is it still in that game, you know, more than?
A, a, again. No, there's no debate whether we need to put a new water line up on three. There's no debate that I've heard about the necessity of a, of a expanded.
New.
Police station. It's, it's, it's what? Price level. And again, we, we can't do a whole lot of negotiation on the, on the water thing, um, but we're talking about the price of what. The uh, the police station. We can afford and pass a town meeting.
I think five billion is really cutting yourself short.
The only one probably the cheapest one in this room. Pretty damn close.
Let's take a vote, Paul.
When, when, when it comes to town stuff and budgets and, and saving money. And wanna support not, but I gotta tell you, looking at what other stations have done, what we had. I get that I could support four million dollar period, never mind the fund debt, but four million dollar period. And, and that, that would be. Don't take all of that out, just. I think that's.
How much was Belmont's, did you say?
Three and a half.
And when was that built?
With two years, year and a half, we use.
Nineteen?
Was it twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty or twenty-one, yeah. And did it for three and a half, and, and like I said, I think. Look, no matter what you're doing, you're probably gonna miss some stuff and say, you know, we gotta get that next time. Before we get a budget for it. Especially when you're trying to pare things down. You're never gonna get all of what you wanted, because you started with eight and a half. And you go down to six, you're still leaving some of the stuff out, and if you go down to four, you're still leaving some of the stuff out. So you're, just by bridge of, loo- looking at what you're doing. You're gonna be asking for some more somewhere.
Jack, oh, one other thing though. I may be the stu- second stupidest person in the row, um, but. But okay, maybe I, maybe I wanna be number one. But anyways, I mean, one of the issues that concerns me is. To get it before the taxpayers now. Because next year, we don't know, we may have another bond issue. Likely we've got the two million on, unanticipated on the uh Route Three, we didn't anticipate that. But it's something that came up after having what, three or four leaks this past summer when, you know, that had to be fixed, that we wouldn't have any water up there. So there's an, an, you know, unexpected um capital improvement that you have to do, that you had to bond, so there's two man. We all know in this room, particularly those that are involved, know that, you know, down the road, whether it's two years, whether it's five years. It's gonna be a massive bond of probably eight to ten million dollars to do that sewer plant, don't we? How long can that live, it's like as currently, so you know, let's say that hits next year. Then people are saying, well, jeez, do I choose between shit, excuse me, crap in my home, or do I choose between a, a, a police station? So, you know, I mean, I'd say get it out there now, if it fails, at least people know about it and they know why we need it now. So, I mean, that's, you know, my opinion.
I pointed something out too.
Go ahead.
I was just looking at town. Eleven officers and two dispatches, that doesn't say who's full of part-time. And that includes their chief in there, the deputy chief and the rest, which I don't think Chad included in his numbers. So. It's a smaller apartment with no. Real dispatch center, I mean, the two, two dispatches, that's not a full-time five, six. Person, twenty-four, twenty-four seven operation with two dispatchers, right? So I just wanted to point that out, that the, the price point there is not.
We, we don't have a new police station in Lincoln to compare the price to that we wanna build a new police station. So we're gonna, gonna have apples to apple. The, the best thing you could do is look what other people are doing.
We did.
Compare it a little bit, we did, nobody's at eight point five.
Bristol's building one right now for seven.
Where is?
Bristol. And they took the design from another community and they plopped it, design work done. They essentially bought a set of plans from another community and plopped it on a lot in Bristol and it was seven million. And they went to town meeting in twenty twenty and they got five million dollars. They had to go back last year at twenty twenty-one and raise two more million dollars because the quote that they had. From twenty twenty was no longer relevant, and that is picking up and dropping down, that's seven million, so. I.
And I don't know. Was that, was that the same? As the Tilton one?
As the. Yes. Right, but I think if you look at the square footage.
Police and fire.
In Bristol?
No, Farmington.
Farmington, in Bristol, it's just the um, the.
It's local contractors.
And I don't know if any of these people are very good at what they do, maybe we have no idea. We're talking about here is like. What would, what, and what can you get approved, I think the bottom line.
I think one of the things to help it get approved too would be, is cheap with. Take a bunch, bunch of pictures of what it is like now. So that he has posters or showing, because a lot of people don't go into the police station. So if they see that you guys are having a change in the hallways, that they're, you know, that they're.
The company we hired too has a public relations piece that we never tapped into.
Right, we haven't. We don't have the plans to do so, we put the bra, a smaller building, but I mean, still are in contract for them to have public hearings and, you know. Postcards and selling documents and, you know, all the pretty pictures and, and what.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
To this meeting before we can give them any direction.
A raise on.
Okay, thank you, uh, it's been a really great discussion here. Uh, and of course it'll be a lot more, but uh. I think talking to people in town, a majority of the people. Believe our community needs a new fire, a new police station now, uh, and. Generally think that the costs are gonna go up. Clearly, we need to be as responsible and realistic as possible, and the discussion tonight proves to the community. That you got, you. That you got, you are doing exactly that. You being extremely responsible in how you approach this. I think we need to start the station as soon as possible. There's so many great ideas, Jack's idea about uh, grant leadership and his experience in that field. Could be a great asset. Karina's comments about uh, what other communities have done, including buying plans from somebody, that's no small ticket. Uh, and if we could save some money there, we should do it. Uh, Dennis's experience of prices stabilizing is consistent with my similar. Uh, experience on some projects that we're doing in the Concord area. They have been going up, the prices are now going down. But at some point, we've got to get to the, to the community, and I think you've done enough analysis. To show that this board is, is responsible as you can possibly be. Uh, the situation may not get better, uh, it might get worse, and then we're in bad shape, if it gets better. Everybody's a hero that's making the decision because you took action and you won. Uh, sometimes you lose and, and you need some more money. You've looked, you're looking at a lot of ways to approach this. Uh, it's been an issue for years, our police station is in bad shape. The department needs the support that, that we're talking about tonight. Uh, the community needs it. Uh, I would, I would be very strongly in support of. A vote to move forward now and bring this, bring this to the community, if they say no, uh, we'll be back at it again. But it also shows the police department that we're with them, and uh, we certainly are, they're a great bunch, we're very lucky. So those are my comments. I ca- I, I can answer questions if you want, but I don't think you want any.
Thank you, Ray.
And nothing we can do, and I think it's cut it way too close. Especially based on. The um, Tilton, numbers on the Tilton Police Department, um, that was just built, the Bristol one. And I did look up Bristol, they have on their website, I've counted eleven officers and a full-time dispatch, at seven. Million, I think five is cutting it way too close. And we're not gonna get what we need. I don't think it's possible.
We usually go by, they come within. Plus minus twenty percent, because they're not kinda giving, like I said before, they're not counting every two. So I usually say, okay, it's, they are the twenty percent down, or twenty percent up, I says, it's totally even now, so. So if you go twenty percent down, that's a six million, seven hundred thousand dollars, when you think about it, then build thirty-five hundred square foot homes in the back over here. Three hundred thou- that three hundred dollars a square foot, that's nine hundred thousand dollars. Or a four bedroom, two and a half bath. Without bulletproof. You know, you also, I like what Brian's saying, talking about your place of, your place of debt, you also got. Uh, I'm just gonna repeat it on me here, we went from, uh, we went from. Uh, a mill building, and that lot, I paid the town total of twelve thousand dollars of the year in taxes. The building phase one that we had now, and you said it yourself, OJ, what year, the tax base was leveled. The private came online, we paid about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Next year at this time, space two's gonna be on the same size. Another three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I don't wanna hit that, but. You know, this growth, Chief was right, there's growth in this town.
So, so basically, you're saying you're gonna pay the debt.
I am me going, I will pay by tax. Bottom line is, I think six works. Um, I'd hate to go back, I've never go, I've gone back to my bed once, that they go through me out. Six works, I would go to that tonight. You have to. Or just sorry, you have, you have.
A- a- and again. I think we have better negotiating power. If we haven't funded, we're saying, this is it, this is what we got, and I think that we would, we would um. Continue to, to try to. I don't say cut corners, but be thrifty and get it below the six, so that, you know, as, as Cindy said, we'll, we'll, you know, up to six million dollars. And, and, you know, a- again, I'm sold on. Doing a basement level and putting the cells and Sally ports and stuff down there. At a very inexpensive per square, square foot cost to, to. Construct, construct um, finished space in a, in a basement. Um, but I think with. With all of the setup, all of that, that six million dollars is a, a reasonable price to go for, and I would hope that the budget committee would support that. And help uh, promote that to the top.
No more than six.
And that's an outfitted up to a police station with cell doors and. All the. Bulletproof glass, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that's needed, alright.
If we're good, I wanna close the public hearing. Wasn't as quick as we thought. The, the board then, how have the, there's a motion of um, six million, do we wanna stay there, do we wanna change it, or is that what we're going with?
I'll make a motion, we placed the six million dollar bond for the police department on the law.
All those in favor? And motion to adjourn? Public hearing?
Well, yes, moved second, whatever you mean.
So the budget committee is now gonna take over for their public hearing.
What, can I just make one comment before the board adjourns? So, um, I know this isn't part of the bond hearing, but there was a four hundred thousand dollar award or, or for the engineering. Are we? Moving forward?
Discuss that with them.
Cause if, if they vote down, but they already did. You voted down. So we just missed.
Is Herb here?
Yeah, and then I also have updated revenues, we did find an error on the last uh, revenue report. We were double, we were double accounting for.
Only time to get tonight.
Um, updated revenues, we found a mistake on the revenues that I gave you uh, on Tuesday, where we were double accounting for some of the revenue. So I want.
I mean, does that make sense, you know that, if like, if the um, construction budget cash, you're gonna go for the engineering one? That's still at the four hundred thousand?
Let's have the budget committee talk about that while we go down. Here, Ray doesn't like when we use the actual verbiage.
As long as we understand that.
Did you not sign it, you know, you have your folder?
No, I gave it to you and you walked out with it. That was my second job. No, not, they're addicts, they're sports and all that stuff. I was a teacher and you're not your son.
I just totally did my, we did that whole campaign.
I love doing that.
Oh, I don't.
If you enjoy that.
Yeah, that is what I'm gonna.
Right here, go there, sorry.
Did we stop this and have to read? It's still going, it's still going, oh, okay.
Yep, yeah, there is. We can cut it.
I'll cut in between the two.
I wish that that was not on, we don't have a meeting session, that shouldn't be on.
Only one was set up for tonight, the, the bond hearing and the budget hearing, but you, you can add it.
Uh, Chris, or I mean, you can give it to me and I'll just.
Okay, so we'll call the budget committee meeting to order at seven. Well. And. Rudy, you want to, I heard you talking about that there was a change in the estimated revenues?
Yes, um, so um. From Tuesday meeting, uh, I. Went back, um, there was some question about why the revenues on the total port fee didn't match the revenues I gave you.
Right.
So I did go back and Donna and I reviewed everything, and when we reviewed everything, there are gonna be some revenues that aren't technically considered department revenue. Like um. Payment in lieu of taxes, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is gonna be included in the bottom line. The interest on taxes, that forty grand we have budgeted, isn't gonna be included in department revenue. Um, there are certain, there's about four hundred thousand dollars that doesn't. Count as. Department revenue. So, we also found an error in which we were double including some of the revenue from the town of Woodstock. We were including it in the above numbers from revenue from other governments, and then we were also including it in charges from the departments. So we corrected that error, um, and just made sure that everything else made sense. Yeah, but I'm not putting it on there until it passes. It will be on there. No, it's included in the warrant articles as we read them and as we vote on them.
But we don't know if it's proposed yet because it hasn't been voted on, we don't know if we're gonna get it.
Right, cause we can vote on it, but what if the school doesn't vote on it, and then we're waiting essentially for. The school to vote on it.
They don't wanna include it in estimated revenue because voted down at town meeting and at school.
Well, next, it'll be, if it gets voted on, it'll be, it'll be shown in here as next year.
It will be shown in actuals as uh, and in estimated for the bottom, correct.
Okay, so. On our um. No, it's, we're not gonna do this. Is on our um. Uh, the operating budget totals worksheet. And offset. Department revenues. There, is that changed, that's changed from last?
Um, it has slightly, yes, because I wanted to identify what you were counting, what would be considered department revenue versus what was considered kind of. Abserrary, I don't, I don't have a better term for it, um, revenue such as the payment and loan taxes, you know, the interest on taxes. Um, so if you look at your operating budget totals worksheet, you'll see from offsetting revenue from the departments is that. Uh, one million, two forty.
Right.
Um, and then if you look underneath, it's about three, you know, three figures down, the six seventy-five, four thirty-two. That's revenue that comes from other sources, other than department sources, and so the, the total, um. Is underneath that.
The total's a four, six, nine, five.
Four, six, nine, five, and but that also includes the bond revenue. So that's why it's so high.
Okay, uh, the other night we voted on, you accept the operating budget's offsetting revenue total of. A million, nine ninety-eight, eight fifty-four. And so now that number is a million, nine fifteen, seven twenty-two.
Correct.
Alright, so I, we should revoke on that. Is there a? Is there a motion to um. To vote on the updated number for the estimated town revenues, the amount of a million, one million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars?
Second.
Tammy's second discussion? Okay. Um, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, it passes, you added the amount of one million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. And nothing else on our operating worksheet has.
No, the only thing you will need to do, because we tabled the discussion on the CBA agreement, so. Um, that is the only thing that was outstanding, I believe, from today.
And then we have three totals to bring.
So did they ratify?
They did ratify it, they ratified it late last night, it was a seven to four vote, and um, it will go on voting voters.
So do we have a checklist what that is?
I have a, I, I, I brought a paper copy, cause I thought someone was gonna ask. I don't have it in the full agreement form, but I have all the proposed changes that will go into the new agreement. Um, we haven't finalized the actual document, cause they don't do that at the after-town meeting, but I have um, for your reading pleasure, um. A copy of the signed agreement with the proposed changes.
There you go.
Not anymore, not as of last night, so that's. Not anymore, not as of last night, so that's.
Well, I just didn't want that, yeah, I afraid.
I wouldn't want that.
I've got guns, lots of them.
I think they visit.
I don't have any hills in the automatic. Okay, so do.
So what's the collective bargaining amount?
The collective bargaining amount is the amount that was originally proposed on seventy six, sixty, seventy six since the first year.
I don't make a motion to um. Um. Recommend, sorry, the collective bargaining agreement for year one at seventy six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
That's right. Second discussion? Okay, all in favor, uh, raise your hand and say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay, the collective bargaining agreement motion has passed.
Mike, I'd like to also make a, a motion that we revisit the new police station construction bond in the new amount of six million dollars. Was to recommend that amount.
So could you state the motion again?
I make a motion. That we. Recommend. Um, the new police station construction bond in the amount of six million dollars.
Oh, sorry, okay. Everybody got that? And second? Okay, discussion? I'm just gonna say that. I'll support what they do the voters, but I don't think. But I don't think we got it down. Support of purposes of this committee, just. Moving on.
Get it to the voters.
Right. I don't like the way we got here. Is, there's an awful, I just, I'll put this out, is there's an awful lot that's changed in the description of the building.
Yep.
In the last two or three meetings, because you know, it just, it, we started out that the, that um. It was gonna be the police station and then later on, we were gonna attach the fire station. But then in a later meeting, it's like, well, maybe the fire station will go there, maybe it is, maybe, maybe it won't. And. It was started out with the committee that the committee worked on it, but then they said the select persons ignored their recommendation. And voted on this amount on their own.
No.
Well, Al, let me just.
I, I don't know where you, where the, the start of the police station, then now the fire station, that's just misses misinformation that may have been quote unquote out there. That is nothing that the.
That's the part I'm not happy about.
Nothing that the selectmen even discussed. Once we, we discussed the police fire. City public safety building, when that price came in at twenty four million, we said, we can't do that. And at that point decided that the immediate dire need was with the police station. So then it was to try to um build a police station only. Period. The current fire station will need some. Um, upgrades, renovation, you know, um, T L C, if you will. Um, however, we had, this whole phase thing was not even discussed at the selectman um. Level at all. And as far as the committee goes, the committee did its job very, very, very well. They did all the, 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 made all the decisions on whether there needs to be a police or a fire or town hall and where it should be and. And, and, you know, did a lot of homework and they did their job and they brought that to the selectman. And then we made a decision. So.
You, that's a recreation of what I heard. And, and I just put it out because. It started with an everybody nodded their head when I said, the other night we left here and it was. Pretty solid that the fire station was gonna be attached to that somewhere down the road. And then when I mentioned that, that it's like, wait a minute, now it's kind of itty. And, and I saw that, I saw the heads nod. Then we left it the other night, it was gonna be solid and then now we heard it tonight and I'm not making a huge thing out of it. Because i- i- it's one of those that in these discussions. Is, and that, you know, the, the thing that I ask is after the, after the committee made its very first recommendation, you said you. They were done with everything. They had done their job and it was. But then, you know, Al brought up the number of ways that it could have saved money and could have done this and could have done that.
And we took those into account when they were brought to us.
And we took those and then we went back to the engineers and the architects and then that's how we came to the same five. Because it was a twenty four when it was a joint building.
Right.
And then. No one could swallow that number, obviously.
Right.
Um, so we took recommendations from the committee, uh, Pete Bowles, as he said, had thirty five recommendations, you know. John Hettinger had some recommendations, Al collected all those, he submitted them all to us. We forward those alls to, all those recommendations to the architect and started redesigning a smaller building with a reduced scope. Right.
Al?
Um. It, it originally started off as a safety complex with a fire poison dispatch.
Correct.
And then once we did the conceptual designs and we worked with the. The manager and the selectman, they came back, it's actually, I think it came back at twenty seven dollars.
Twenty seven million?
Twenty seven million. And then it was twenty four. And then.
Where's the twenty seven come from? I didn't hear that at all, anywhere.
I'm pretty sure it was twenty.
Twenty four.
Yeah.
And then what happened was we all met, um, we met with the architect. And we kind of went over the building itself. They asked us for recommendations from the committee, they were all submitted to the selectman. And then the selectman made decisions from there.
We submitted.
The committee work was essentially completed. And we were more a advisory committee, just, you know. Eyes and ears of the town and then we submitted to the selectman and then they took over and the decisions were made through the selectman's office.
Right, right.
And I have to say, the building committee did a fantastic job, no question.
Yes, that's great.
Great people.
I, I, again, I'm, I'm gonna go out on, I'm gonna go out on a limb in this, but the statement that you made the other night. Was that the selectman went behind your back and made this vote.
No, we were shocked as a committee, we were a little shocked. We, we really weren't aware of it and the committee members. Expressed to me that, you know, I thought we were more of a, a decision-making uh committee here. Not to make the final decision because they are, but we were just a little shocked at it.
Right, so.
So, but that's their right. They had the right to make that decision.
Right.
And not even in, include us, which is, we're a committee of volunteers, they're elected officials, so they had the right. And I explained to the committee members that that's their decision, they're the ones dealing with the money, not us, we are just advising, so.
Okay, that's, that's right, um. So let it go, just one of those, but what I am, what I put out here so far is not misinformation. That's, I gotta be careful how it gets clarified, it's like this, it was all misinformation, now this is all what I heard. And what I, but, and, and a good portion of it, you know, is in minutes and all I was saying is that. I'm not necessarily happy as to how we got here. It's a little bit messy, I, I would have hoped, this is just me. But I would have hoped that a lot of this discussion, C I P, the committee, the select, all negotiation would have happened. Before public hearing, you know, to come in and change it, we gotta offer, there's a building that could be made for a million and a half. He's got two sixty five a square foot. You got six hundred a square foot and all of a sudden in, in, in an hour, we're making the decision that we, that we have to do it. And I agree that we have to do it and I'm actually, all right, where we're gonna go with it. The saying that the process that we got here by is, is just a little bit. Rushed.
With all due respect, I think you're bringing in suggestions.
I'm watching.
Not information. Um, you're, 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 you're saying the information I got, no, they were suggestions. Somebody said, and I don't know who it was, I'm just gonna put the harshest out there. Well, can we build it, can this be done in phases? And then someone else said, can you eventually add the fire department to it? That wasn't what was brought, that isn't the information that the selectman brought to anything ever. That was suggestions from your committee that you're saying, well, I was told this and I was told that. Well, no, there were suggestions that were.
Yeah.
Somebody said, can this be done in phases? We have one else said, we are the public. We were the public.
This committee made zeros for one, sure.
Uh, I'm excited to go back and watch.
But there, there were no suggestions made from this committee. I mean, that people. That suggested it.
I didn't say that.
Yes.
What's that?
You asked a question.
Yes.
No, that's, I, I asked a question of whether to be done in phases. I didn't ask that.
What?
That's where that came from. That didn't come with the selectman.
Right?
Mike, just so that I understand clearly, I've looked at the warrants from previous years. If the budget committee tonight um. In a majority vote. Recommends this six million dollar project. When we go to the, to the town meeting, that's the official position. Of the budget committee, even if some of the members choose not to support it.
Correct, right.
Oh, yes, right, right. If we speak out against it all we want.
Yeah.
As an, as an individual. You can speak whatever you want to after it's over. That's, that's part of the thing is you give up a little bit of individuality when you're. Part of the committee, because this is what the committee recommends and it's voted by a majority.
Right, but.
Well, we say that.
One second.
Official position of the budget committee. If they recommend it, they're recommending this proposal, if a budget committee member chooses. Take off their budget committee hat and go back into the public, they can have a different opinion.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be aware of your.
Just a clarification.
Yeah, it's.
Ever. The budget committee, not, if, if the majority. Of the budget committee, if there are members of the budget committee that do not recommend it. Then the correct word will be that it was not a um unanimous vote. So you, you can't just say that. Group everybody in if it wasn't a unanimous vote, if it's unanimous, then you go as unanimous, if it's not, you gotta say it was not unanimous.
Well, he could either says recommends or he will not recommend.
It doesn't say anything about unanimous.
It doesn't, it doesn't, right, go ahead.
Correct.
Did you wanna say something?
No, that's what I was just gonna say, you know, the budget committee either recommends it doesn't, don't really list the vote.
Right.
Yes, and, and, and you can, as, if you say it wasn't, if it wasn't recommended unanimously, you're speaking as a private citizen.
Right.
Right. That's just. But the budget committee is recommending it.
We, we.
Or not.
Or not, right. But, you know, like, and I'm not saying we're the Supreme Court. But when they make a decision, the numbers go four, five, six to three, seven to two. I think our idea would be that. Make it.
The decision, it's the decision.
The level of support that it had. There is a difference between a unanimous decision for a decision that eats past, so.
I don't wanna open a can of worms, but in the community I worked for previously, they put the vote, the tallies on the warrant.
Yeah, you can do that. That's one of those. Yeah, I've read about their change.
I mean, it does open a can of worms.
I've seen it when they list the names of who voted yay and who voted nay.
Yep. In, in Camden, they would ask at town meeting for every single warrant article, who voted for and who voted against this?
But the wording on the warrant would be a selectman decision to change, correct?
Um, well, D R A proposes most of the language and D R A proposes the selectman recommend, the budget committee recommend. I don't think it, um, the language, yeah, how the warrant are, how the warrant looks is a selectman decision, correct?
Next, okay, one more question? Oh, I put your.
I'm moving the question.
Okay, all in favor of a good question, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstained, okay, uh, it's unanimous, all right, the motion on the table is um. Motion to recommend the amended amount of six million dollars for the new police station construction bond. Tammy made the motion, did you send it, said Dennis seconded it, okay. Discussion, further discussion? All right, is all in favor, all in favor of recommending the amended amount of new police station construction bond, the amount of six million dollars, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Eight.
Opposed?
One.
Two, three, four. Okay, um, the motion uh to recommend the budget for six million dollars. Um, recommend the most be article, warrant article for six million, passes, yes.
What was that about again? Four to what?
Eight to four.
Eight to four.
Eight to four?
Yeah.
That's not the concerns as a.
Also, not here.
I'm just saying, it's not, that's all. Of course, you gotta make the facts speak from where they are, that's all.
I would also like to make a motion that we reconsider. Recommending the new police station design engineering amount of four hundred thousand. Which is in the, in the event the six million fails, we can still give you sick design.
Second? Discussion? Yeah, there ain't no way that the public could pass that if they vote down the uh. Police station, so it's really, what's the time? Yes, I have a question to say this. You gotta have. You gotta go back and reengineer, so it's gonna be some reengineering done. But it's four hundred thousand. Two hundred thousand, it's gotta be something. But it's not gonna pass.
Right, but you don't know the cycle.
And you don't know that it won't pass, because that's the way it can be, I mean, we're going to go back and. Reevaluate. If the four, if the six million doesn't pass. And the, and the four hundred thousand or whatever number arbitrarily throw at it. This project goes absolutely nowhere and I think the consensus of the, of this committee and also the board of selection is. This project needs to go forward, whether it's at a reduced scale or.
Reduced timeframe.
Or a reuse time or whatever it is, if, if, if both of these warrant articles are voted no, this project goes nowhere this year. Absolutely nowhere. We stop all design work, we stop all work with the construction buildings, you know, nothing happens.
If the main article fails, it doesn't go anywhere. Doesn't matter whether you get the four hundred thousand designed or not, that main article fails.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Jack had his hand up.
Where's it gonna go?
It says. You can do, still approve the engineering, correct? And then that will.
Well, you'll have four hundred thousand engineer, but you won't have sixteen dollars, build the building.
Doesn't matter. Okay, hold on, Jack, go ahead.
Whatever. Oh, I'm going back to, I think, third grade math class and I thought um. Two thirds, eight over twelve is two thirds, which is sixty six percent.
Right.
So it does, did meet the sixty six percent threshold.
Right.
They kick me out every day, so.
All right, uh, you missed that tape.
Oh, Jack?
We've done this. Several times in past town meeting, where we had a bond vote, where as a backup, we reminded the engineering, whatever the project was. The, 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 the main bond. If it passes, we don't need this article because it includes the engineering. What this allows us to do is if people say, well. We want more detail, we want a firm price, we want a quote, we want a bid, we want. It allows us to move forward and come to the, to the meeting the following year. Visit those details without funding this. I guess I would also like with the no vote. Direction on where this town should be going with a, with a police thing. Should we be out seeking leased space? I mean, if we're not even gonna fund design, then let's fund the alternative.
So. Has any of those engineering? Engineering uh warrant passed when the original bond failed? Has that ever happened?
One that I can think of off the top of my head, but has been others, yes.
Yeah.
And, and it has a lot of us to come back, because people will say.
The levy, I think that was.
Yeah, we said that.
The levy was, yeah. One of them, it took a few years.
The original town building, the original design for the town building did, but. Because they, they got the money for the engineering and they designed it and it got shot down. Two or three times. And then we finally got it.
Yeah. When was this building built?
Very old, isn't it?
It's all, it's all.
The original, what you, what.
Building was in the garage.
This.
Ninety three, four, five.
Ninety seven, yeah, because the police station was down in the daydream office.
No, you'll do the ninety nine, I apologize.
Ninety nine?
It would be like ninety.
Cal was up there.
Police station was too, yeah.
Ninety eight, ninety seven.
Can we move the question here?
Yeah, we don't get what you can just.
We have a motion on the table, it's been seconded to, to do the engineering.
Yes.
And we're getting way far afield.
Right, right, we're in the daydreams now, yes, but. Okay, um. I restate the motion, the Tammy, we're up, that she would like us to. We like it, make motion, we'd like us to reconsider the new police station design engineering amount. Uh, in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. For the discussion? Okay, all in favor of, um, all in favor of. Um, recommending the new police station design engineering building, the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Hold on, keep your hands up. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I got ten.
Opposed?
Right, two. And out, three.
That's it.
I got.
I'm sorry, Al.
For the design. We don't have to spend up before.
No, no, no.
No.
That means that the budget committee and the selectman now. Recommend all articles, both of us.
Right.
Yeah, so now we have to do three totals.
Um.
The first one is the subtotal of all the special warrant articles. The first one is the subtotal of all the special warrant articles. We're gonna do that one first.
Right, and so that's gonna reduce by two point five million, right?
So what, what would that amount?
Yeah, let's see. So the. Um, so the special warrant article subtotal is nine million. Six seventy-three, four seventy-two. The total for the CRF funds and the special warrant articles are. Ten million, eight ninety-five, four seventy-two.
Okay, and then the grand total of everything.
Bottom line grand total is, um.
You wanna take it to maybe five hundred thousand?
Yes, no, it's eighteen. Eighteen million, six eighty-one, six fifteen.
Can you repeat that again?
They matched. We did, eighteen. Eighteen million, s- six eighty-one. Six fifteen. That's where you got to?
Yep. We matched on all of them.
Good.
But you also gotta remember, a lot of that will be offset by revenue, if the bond does pass.
Right.
The, there will be eight point two million dollars in revenue.
Right.
Along with the bonds.
And we won't be spending the. Four hundred.
Thousand, right.
Just the engineering, the rest of that art.
Right, so now we have to, uh, agree to each, each one of those.
Right, okay, so if we start with the, the subtotal for the warrant article.
Yep.
Is there a motion to, um, recommend the. Uh, recommend the subtotal of the warrant articles in the amount of nine million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars?
So moved.
Oh, second. Move, Brian's second, discussion? Okay, all in favor of recommending the subtotal for the warrant articles, the amount of. Nine million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Eight.
Opposed? One, two, three, four. The motion varies. All right, now in the, um, um. Grand total.
Nope, CRF trust funds and warrant articles together.
That's, that's what I meant, yeah, I was getting that. Grand total for the CRF trust funds and the warrant articles, um, is there a motion in the amount of. Ten million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars?
So moved.
Second, Cindy, discussion? Okay, all in favor of recommending the grand subtotal, the grand total amount for the trust funds and the special warrant articles in the amount of. Ten million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 But keep your hands up. Nine, I got nine.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the motion, um, for the grand total varies. Okay, last one. Is the overall grand total of the operating. And the, um, CRF and special warrant articles, there's a motion to. Approve the, um, recommend the amount of eighteen million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
So moved.
Question, then a second, discussion? Okay, all in favor of, uh, approving the total amount of eighteen million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Six, seven, eight, nine.
Opposed? Okay, the motion for the grand total of the operating and the CRF warrant articles is recommended. Are we finished? What's that?
Welcome to a yard.
Is that the public hearing?
No, it's not the public, now we open.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Yes. Okay, public hearing is open, anything from the public?
Public comment?
No question.
Okay. That's where I usually fail.
Any of the specific budgets, but just the budget in general. Okay. Hopefully after I shut off the public hearing, you better vote to approve the whole budget. To bring to the town meeting. The, right? That'll be your, that'll be your next step.
How we just did that?
It just did.
You did that.
You have to do it again after.
Voted to bring that public hearing.
Oh.
Listen to me and when I. Town meeting.
Okay.
All right. The budget that you bring to town meeting. Is signed by the individual members of the budget committee.
Right.
In signing that budget. Are you agreeing? With everything in that budget? Or are you agreeing that that's the budget that this committee voted on in a majority to bring to town meeting?
So that's my question.
Number two.
Number two.
Number two.
All I'm saying is because, because it comes up heavy here when you use to sign the budget. I'm saying.
I don't sign it, eh?
That, that, even if you sign that, you're not agreeing, you may have voted no, as some of you did.
Right.
But you're saying that this is the budget that the majority voted on and that we're required. To bring to town meeting.
Yes, yeah.
That's what you're signing. Okay, did you hear that, Brent, that's why I asked the question?
Yeah.
He doesn't understand.
And, but, what's the definition of insanity?
Exactly.
I'll, I'll paraphrase, asking the same question and expecting a different answer.
I have never asked a question before. By this, we'll finish in front of me.
I'm just joking.
See, when you're. When you're on a board or a committee, and, and even if you don't agree with the outcome or the vote or the answer.
Right.
If, if the committee or board voted majority in favor. Then as a board member, you must support that decision, whether you.
I will take a very strong. You, you have to agree that that is the decision of the board.
Yes.
You support.
No, you decide. You support the board's decision.
Oh, no, no.
You support.
No.
That was the board's decision.
You, you support.
Exactly, yes. I'm sorry, I was saying it. Support that that was the board's. No, no, I agree, I agree, I was, I was not stating correctly. Yeah.
And if you're acting in a, in a, in a board capacity like you do with the budget committee. As you guys said, you have to vote the way that you are, that the, um. But I would tell them not to. Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah.
You can tell them how any of us voted or what any of us said.
Twice.
Very, very there, but, um.
Right.
Um, you just, you just can't represent, you're not speaking for the committee.
Yeah.
That's the.
Oh, I was, I'll hardly agree with that.
Did you refuse every year to sign the?
That's it, if I don't agree with it, I don't.
Slightly infantile, but okay.
All what's wrong.
I did.
I call it being, being an American doing what I, what I wanna do.
We don't need to throw it.
Okay, okay.
I know, that was, that was a pretty big. Well, no, we got, no. A public hearing is still open. You know, um. All right, the motion to close the public hearings. Move.
Second.
Second.
Cindy. Hey.
Discussion.
I'm trying to call this at a time.
Okay.
Seven forty-five.
Public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um.
Opening.
Opening the budget committee meetings.
From six.
Is, um, cause you didn't close it, but that's right, the film was still going anyway.
But I can't wait to have time each time. One minute different.
Okay, so now I'm looking at where our grand total is. It's the same as the last number you gave us, right?
Yes, the eighteen, six eighty-one.
Okay.
Six eighty-one.
Please.
I'm making a motion that we approve. Or recommend the total budget of eighteen million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second. Second? Discussion?
So he seconded.
Okay, okay, sorry, okay. All right, no, okay, all in, all in favor of recommending the grand total budget in the amount of eighteen million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars? Please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, you got it, opposed?
Three.
Three, abstain? Okay, the motion, uh, for the grand total, um. Is recommended.
Now that we.
Motion to.
So you know, we're certain now?
Well, we're, we're, we're in there and so, anybody, anybody have any notes?
Do you wanna, do you wanna, uh, vote on the rev?
We did, we did that, we did.
During the public part?
Oh, the majority of the members is after the public hearing as well? I don't think so. Only expenditures. The expenditures, yeah. No, you voted on them at your regular.
So Paul was the first on the journey.
No.
Dennis was.
Dennis was.
Well, second.
Second? Discussion, okay, all in favor? Well, thank you, everyone. Minutes, right? Yeah, everyone.
Sending to be that, that minutes because I don't know about anybody else, but Brent is comfortable with, he didn't agree to some of the things I. So I don't know if next time I need to bring that to be okayed and then he would. Cause I don't wanna give it out when somebody's not happy.
Yeah, we should have.
She has cast for them from me and I'm like, ah, I think, I, I, I didn't say anything back, so I was like.
How's he doing? What's he, what's he on the study?
Like what?
What's that? Good for him, good for him. I don't know, let's see, I, I've not seen, tell myself, like, I haven't seen them and. Oh, good, okay, yeah. Yeah. I think that, I think it's probably about six or seven. Well, that's, 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 that's getting you shit altered, that's like, uh. Murray Park is terrible, it's a job for everyone, very, very, everybody's working on it.
No, thank you.